I'd like to call the Monday, September 21, 2020 Oakwood City Council Meeting to order. Would you please rise and join me with the Pledge to the Flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I thank all of you for coming this evening. In accordance with the Governor's mask order, anyone who decides to come into the meeting or leave the meeting, we request that they wear a mask. If you are seated at your seat and you wish to remove your mask, you are allowed to do that. But if you, but again, if you need to come up and address council, we would like, at this podium here, we would like for you to wear a mask until you get to the podium, and then you may remove your mask to address council. May I have a roll call, please? Lori?
Mayor Duncan?
Here.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Here.
Mr. Stevens?
Here.
Mrs. Hilton?
Here.
Mr. Epley?
Here.
And can all of you hear us in the audience? Thank you. This is the first time we've ever had a council meeting at the OCC, so it's an interesting change of pace. Could I have a report on our minutes of our July 20 regular session and our August 24 work session? Councilmember Hilton?
Yes, Your Honor, I've reviewed the minutes from both of those meetings, and I found them to be correct and complete, and therefore, I move that we adopt them as written.
Is there a second? Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, so ordered. We have several status reports tonight, and we have a lot of distinguished visitors here in the audience. We welcome you. First of all, the Auditor of State, their office, he is one of five elected statewide office holders in Ohio, and he's responsible for auditing more than 6,000 state and local government agencies. Under the direction of Auditor Keith Faber, the office also provides financial services to local governments, investigates and prevents fraud in public agencies, and promotes transparency in government. In July, he gave an award to the city of Oakwood. It's called the Auditor of State Award, and it is for local governments and school districts upon the completion of their financial audit. Entities that receive this award must meet the criteria of a clean audit report, which includes: The entity must file financial reports with the Auditor of State's office by the statutory due date without extension via the Hinkle system and in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. The audit does not contain any findings for recovery, material citations, material weaknesses, significant deficiencies, or questioned cost. The entity's management letter contains no comments related to ethics referrals, questioned cost, lack of timely annual financial report submission, bank reconciliation issues, failure to obtain a timely single audit in accordance with the uniform guidance, findings for recovery less than 500, public meetings or public access issues, and the entity has no other financial or other concerns. We are proud to report that the city of Oakwood received this award, and this is not the first time we have received this award. I think it's at least the third or fourth or maybe fifth time we received this award. And I would like to ask our Finance Director, Cindy Stafford, CPA, if she would come down to address council, and we would like to publicly thank her for her good efforts on behalf of the citizens of Oakwood. Welcome, Cindy.
Thank you. I didn't realize I was going to speak. We did, actually, I think we have received it over six or seven times, I think, that we've gotten the Auditor of State Award. So I'm very pleased. I want to thank my department for all of their efforts and everything that they do every day in order to make this happen. But it is a citywide audit, so it encompasses everything. So it is a top-down approach. So it's everything from council, the city manager, and the department heads, all the way down. So it's everything that we do, following all of the rules, the state laws, and all of our ordinances. So I appreciate my staff, especially in their assistance and their help in everything that they do, so.
Thank you, Cindy. This is really a big deal. You know, there's a lot of issues with accountability in government, and we have always been known in Oakwood as having outstanding financial accounting, good internal controls, and outstanding transparency with our citizens. And so please relay back to your staff how impressed we are with your department and how we expect you to continue the good work.
We will do that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have a recognition of Oakwood Public Safety Officer Claude McCormick. And I would like to ask Chief Hill to come down and make some opening comments, and then I think the chief will invite Lieutenant Baggett, along with Public Safety Officer Greg Ortell, to give us a presentation about the life of Officer Claude McCormick. Welcome, Chief.
I'll keep this brief, as I want Lieutenant Baggett and Officer Ortell to give the information around about Claude. You know, for generations, it has been talked about, in the 1930s, we actually lost an officer here in Oakwood in the line of duty. It's one of those things that was known within the department, but the steps or the actions were never taken to have his line-of-duty death properly recognized, until within the last 12 to 15 months, when Lieutenant Baggett and Officer Ortell started that process. And you'll hear a little bit about what they did to get him formally recognized on the National Memorial. I think the ironic thing about tonight is, as they will talk about in the presentation, Officer McCormick actually lived here, at 105 Patterson, right upstairs in the apartment. So I think the irony of us having this event here tonight to recognize him, you know, is definitely, you know, a tribute to him. With that being said, I also want to recognize Carl Sukelmil from MVCC, who's with us tonight. As a result of the COVID pandemic, the local Montgomery County Police Memorial was canceled this year, and they recognized two in the line-of-duty deaths, my friend Detective George Del Rio from the city of Dayton, and Officer McCormick. And they did a caravan of lights, and you're going to watch a video, and it was a beautiful event that we were able to capture in front of our city building back in May. And Carl is the person behind the video that took all the footage and actually produced it, and we were able to ever have this in Claude's memory. So with that being said, I'll invite Lieutenant Baggett and Officer Ortell up here to the podium, and they can talk more about Claude.
Officer Claude McCormick was a patrol officer here back in the 1930s. He unfortunately-
Could you get closer to the mic so the people at home can hear you?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
All right. So Officer McCormick was a patrol officer here in the 1930s. He was, he rode a motorcycle, and unfortunately, he was involved in an accident at Five Points, in which it was raining, and with all the weather and the wet, he lost control of his bike. He dumped his bike, and he suffered a head injury. Was taken to the hospital eventually, and he succumbed to those injuries. So this initially was brought to our attention by Officer Rob Wilson, who attended a district FOP meeting, and it was brought to our attention that Claude was a line-of-duty death here. And so Officer Wilson came to me and said, would you mind taking this, along with Lieutenant Baggett, to recognize him? And so that started the ball rolling, and we got that process going. So that's kind of the background.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, City Manager, Department Heads, and community members that have taken time to come out and listen to my presentation tonight. I really appreciate that. Again, as Officer Ortell said, it came to light, and the city, and the administration, and the Fraternal Order of Police worked together to gather all the documentation. The city and everybody is really supportive in getting this done and helping us get him recognized in the national level. To begin that, we'll, Officer Patrolman Claude McCormick and the Police Memorial is what I'd like to discuss with you this evening, as I dropped that. Claude McCormick was born in August 15, 1888, in Atlanta, Missouri, to Patrick and Molly Columbia, Missouri, or Atlanta, Missouri is about 70 miles north of Columbia, Missouri, and that puts us about 500 miles, as the crow flies, from Dayton. Around 1911, him and his wife Anna, or Maude, as the census records and Dayton directories show, moved to Dayton, Ohio. Interesting about that, two years later, you move somewhere, and the whole city floods. So Dayton flood was in 1913. So just adding some local history, during the time, I found a 1920 census result that listed Maude, or, sorry, his mom Molly as the head of household, with Maude and Claude living there. Maude was listed as a waitress at a hospital, and Mr. McCormick was listed as an engineer. It's really been amazing to go down this history route to see what's out there. We'll see some documents that I've found or were presented to me, just to get in the genealogy and really see the proof behind of where everybody's been. So just to show his work history, engineer in Missouri, when he moved to Dayton, he worked as an assembly worker. He was a machinist at Delco. We have that on his selective service card here soon. And he also was enlisted in the Army. If you've never seen one of these before directories on the right, it's basically what the phone books used to be back before phones were really around. This is a Dayton directory from 1926, where it shows Claude worked as a grinder, a grinder, and then he lived at 2909 Home Avenue. Here, what you see presented before you is his registration card. The way I was received it, it's actually a selective service card. So Woodrow Wilson passed the Selective Service Act in May of 1917. You can see that Claude registered in November of 1917, where he lived on National Road, and then also that he worked at Delco, which I've highlighted and read. So again, he's really been tied into a lot of this region's history before he came to work for us. After his military service, Claude returned to work as a machinist in the area until in 1930. He joined the Oakwood Public Safety Department as a motor patrol officer. The badge on the right is in a display case at the city building. Best I can recollect from the Oakwood Register picture of him, it looks like a number five or six on his badge number. I haven't been able to find that one, but the number one badge is currently similar or almost the exact match of what he's wearing. So if you'd like to see that and come past this public safety building sometime, there's the complete history of our badges hanging up in a nice display case. Then, as Chief alluded to, a 1930 Dayton directory has Patrolman McCormick at that point, living here at 105 Patterson. Back here above me, there's actually remnants of a restroom, a sink, a mirror, and then just to the side of that, a bedroom, a closet, some flooring, but since time and, you know, use of the building has changed. The stairway, as Carol alluded to me, was originally in this room, correct? It went upstairs to the living facility. So what the mayor said to begin, the first time having a council meeting here, is very nice to see that, you know, it's a way to kind of honor that Patrolman McCormick and his wife lived here. This is the newspaper clipping from the Dayton Daily announcing his death, and also the actual death certificate, which made it very easy to show that he died in the line of duty. It actually shows, I can get printed copies later, but down in this area, it actually says, "In the line of duty," actually listed as death by the autopsy or coroner report. He died of a subdural hematoma, which is basically a brain bleed underneath the first layer of skin in your brain. He went home sick from work that day, didn't feel better, eventually got removed to Miami Valley Hospital, where they tried to relieve that pressure, but he succumbed to those injuries and passed away. August 29 of 1933, at the age of 45. Patrolman McCormick and his wife didn't have children, the best we could figure out. He did have a medical condition, which seemed to limit his possibility of having children. So we tried to find a family member to, you know, pass this along to, to let them know that their family member had been honored, and we were unable to go down and find any next of kin. So we did attempt that to the best of our ability. Mr. McCormick, or Patrolman McCormick was laid to rest at Fort Leavenworth National Cemetery. That's the second oldest Army fort in the U.S. It's been operating since 1888. He was laid to rest on September 3, 1933, so they moved him from here back home, I'm guessing with no additional family members, and Maude probably wanting to be closer to her family, laid him to rest somewhere closer back at home. So he's laid to rest there. Service and sacrifice, we've lost about 90 officers this year alone to traumatic injuries across the U.S. So in 1962, President John F. Kennedy established Police Memorial Day. That is always known as May 15. That has grown over the years to include memorial services in 1982, the dedication of a memorial in Washington, D.C., and an entire week. That week is usually attended by 25,000 to 40,000 people in Washington, D.C. That was our goal, to get there and have some more personalized images from there. But again, we're all dealing with an interesting 2020, so that's been moved down the row. I do have some virtual images of the memorial when we get there. At the Police Week, they have an Emerald Society Pipe Band Memorial, they have National Police Survivors Conference, Honor Guard, and pipe band competitions. They also have a unity ride, where officers and support staff ride from Florham Park, New Jersey, to Washington, D.C., which is about 222 miles. They'll have a flag like this on the back of their bike, and a band that has the officer's name engraved with their line-of-duty death on that as well. So the survivors will get that. So we personally have that, and we'll figure out where that ends up, whether that's a display at the city building or with the historical society, but that'll be now part of our history as well. The bike ride ends by actually riding through the Police Memorial in D.C. One of the events also is a unit, or, why can't I think of the candle? A candle event at the National Mall. So they fill the mall with candlelight vigil, and that's a well-attended, great, you know, event that's just very solemn and very respectful to all the officers at the time. This is the National Memorial. It's located in Judiciary Square. It's a three-acre complex. I know you can't read the words on the front of it, so I added them to the next slide. This memorial is dedicated to all law enforcement officers in the United States of America. Inscribed on these walls are the names of those men and women who died in the line of duty. The bronze lions were cast and put out, for the lions at the time represented strength, courage, and valor of law enforcement officers, and they symbolize the protective role of law enforcement officers. You can actually search National Police Memorial. It's a tour. You can go in and zoom in on the walls. I've attempted to make calls to them. I haven't been able to get a pickup to see if I could actually get the image of Patrolman McCormick's name on there. I think, again, they're just running behind with getting that stuff updated. The memorial contains more than 21,000 names dating back to 1786. New names are added each year in May during the Police Memorial Week, so hopefully by next year, the time we get out there, we can actually get some close-up images and some rubbings, or anybody visits D.C., they might be able to go and see part of Oakwood's history there in D.C. As Chief alluded to, on May 15, the Cable Council did a wonderful job of presenting the Caravan of Lights, and we'll go ahead and show you the Cable Council's production of that. Here is applying police cars to come out and pay respects. They would move from our city building, was the first one, and they ended up downtown in front of the Dayton precinct downtown as well. So a huge amount of surrounding agencies, including fire departments and apparatus, to pay their final respects, since we couldn't do that in D.C.
Patrol Officer Claude McCormick was born on August 15, 1895, in Atlanta, Missouri, and enlisted in the Army to fight World War I. He served in the Army from 1917 to 1919. After his discharge, McCormick settled in Dayton, Ohio with his wife Anna in 1920. Claude joined the Oakwood Public Safety Department in 1929, and served the city of Oakwood as a motorcycle patrolman. On August 29, 1933, while serving the community, Officer McCormick was involved in an accident on Far Hills Avenue at Harmon Avenue. Officer McCormick refused, received first aid at the scene, returned home to rest at 105 Patterson, the Oakwood Community Center. According to reports, Officer McCormick fell unconscious and was removed to Miami Valley Hospital, where he passed away at 11:25 p.m. on August 29, 1933 hours. After research was conducted by members of FOP Lodge 107, it was determined that Officer McCormick has no known descendants. Current members of the Oakwood Public Safety Department felt it was their obligation to make sure that Officer McCormick's sacrifice was not forgotten, and his line-of-duty death was properly recognized. It is with great honor to announce that on May 13, 2020, Patrol Officer Claude McCormick's name will be included on the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Wall in Washington, D.C.
Again, thank you to the Cable Council, and the community members, and the department members. They came out to support Claude on that momentous and memorable make occasion. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your support. Thank you from law enforcement officers everywhere to help us recognize Claude McCormick. And if you have any questions, I don't know.
Thank you, Lieutenant Baggett, for that presentation and all the research that you and the other PSOs did on honoring Claude McCormick. We appreciate it. As you know, we hold our entire department in very high esteem here. You guys save lives, you know, every day, and we appreciate all your efforts. And I know I've said it before, but more than ever, we appreciate the efforts of our Public Safety Department.
Thank you very much, and we feel that the city does support us in a great measure, so thank you for that, sir.
Thank you. If Chief Hill would like to come back to the podium, we have another presentation.
Just to kind of add, just final comments on Officer McCormick. You know, that beautiful day in May that we were able to celebrate, and tonight, this presentation wouldn't have happened without the efforts of Lieutenant Baggett and Officer Ortell. And I think that needs to be recognized. When you see some of the history and the documentation that they had to research, find, and present for his name to be included in a national memorial, it was a lot more than just filling out a form, signing it, and sending it in, and I think you can tell by the history and some of the documentation. So, you know, to have that as your legacy that you guys leave behind of the department, Switching gears here a little bit, on Saturday, March 14, about 10 o'clock in the morning, I received a phone call from Officer Steve Norris. Steve informed me that the evening before, he fell ill with flu-like symptoms. Just to kind of provide some context to where we were on March 14 with regards to the pandemic. At that time, I believe the confirmed number of cases in the state of Ohio on March 14 was 26, with less than a handful of those being in our region of the state. The Family First Coronavirus Response Act hadn't even been passed by Congress. CDC Guidelines and Recommendations for Employers' Employees was just being rolling out, just started to be rolling out with regards to recommendation. And here it is, 10 o'clock in the morning on a Saturday, and Officer Norris and I are having a conversation about what should he do. And at that time, the recommendation was, is to follow up with your primary health care physician. So that's exactly what Steve did. On Monday morning, he made an appointment. He went to his primary care physician. He was tested for the flu, and he tested negative. Well, fortunately for Steve and us, is that Tuesday, March 17, is when the UD COVID testing site actually opened up. So his primary care physician wrote him a prescription to go down and get in line, and Officer Norris, I believe, was the fourth car, he was the fourth person tested in Montgomery County for COVID when they opened that up on the first day. So after the test, the positive side is, is by the time Steve went for the test, he was feeling pretty good. Not back to normal, but he felt better every day. And then the wait began. And when I say the wait began, day after day after day, we waited for test results. It was, there was a little bit, I think, anxiety amongst everybody. Us, you know, as a department, you know, could we have someone who has tested positive from COVID? What would be the ramifications for that? Could we have other employees who contracted as well? There were a lot of unknowns at the time. By Thursday or Friday of that week, Steve was pretty much feeling back to normal. No test results yet, though. The following week, Steve had met every single benchmark with regards to non-sym, or no fever, non-symptoms for greater than 72 hours, more than 10 days since the onset of illness, to the point he could come back to work. No test results yet. So 11 days later, we finally received notification, and Steve was- So, 11 days later, we finally received notification, and Steve was informed that he had tested positive for COVID-19, very, very early on. However, there were a lot of sick people, and that was in the media quite a bit. Steve was pretty much fully recovered by then, back to work. So, how does Steve respond, or how did Steve respond to this? Anybody who knows Steve knows he's a man of faith, knows God called on him to be put in a position for the betterment of others. So, what did Steve do? He decided to donate his plasma in the convalescent plasma program. And I'm going to be quiet here, and I'm going to show this video from Spectrum News that aired on May 11th. The video we're about to show originally aired on May 11th on Spectrum News One. Spectrum News One is a Columbus-based cable news station operated by Charter Communications, and they have graciously given us permission to show the video at our public meeting and a link of it to our website.
This is Steve Norris. He's an Oakwood Public Safety Officer who works as a policeman, firefighter, and EMT through every 24-hour shift.
There's a certain satisfaction that comes with being able to help people in one of their darkest hours or one of their hardest times of their life.
But on March 13th, Steve started to feel ill.
I was fine all day long, like, felt great. And then I laid down to go to sleep, and it was just that quickly that I was like, man, I don't feel so great.
He knew his symptoms, of which included a 102-degree fever, just didn't seem like a normal infection. A negative flu test on March 16th confirmed that. So, he was tested on St. Patrick's Day at the University of Dayton drive-through testing site. His wife Tara, who works as a private care nurse, took care of him while he was ill. But his results took nearly 11 days to come back as COVID-19 positive, and by then, the virus had spread to his wife.
Obviously, the close contact with me, she caught it, and she ended up being a lot more sick than I was, unfortunately.
He says that was one of the toughest things about the situation.
Just especially seeing her with it and how negatively it affected her, her breathing, and just the way she felt, and just is still trying to continue to get over that. It just kind of showed me the need for quick medical treatment, whatever kind of medical treatment is necessary, experimental or whatever, to try to knock this thing out.
Both Steve and Tara have battled through the virus, and now Steve has returned to work, helping serve and protect the Oakwood community.
It felt great. I was here taking care of people for a long time, but I love what I do. I love my job. I love where I work. I love the people I work with. And so, it was just one of those things that was like a breath of fresh air to be able to get back in and doing. I'm 19 years into my career, and it's still exciting to get up and go to work.
But to help beyond the city limits, he's donating his plasma to the Community Blood Center in Dayton to be used as a potential treatment to help others battle severe symptoms of the virus. He hopes others who have recovered can do the same.
It's kind of selfish for me to go, I have antibodies, and I could donate plasma, but I don't feel like it because I don't like needles. It's kind of selfish when somebody else is really, really sick and maybe dying from it, and what I have potentially could help them. So, it's kind of not even a question.
Steve plans on donating as many times as he's allowed, as long as it's helpful. And ultimately, he's grateful that things turned out as well as they did for he and his family.
God uses us in ways that we have no idea about, to accomplish purposes, to help other people. When I look back at the last few months with COVID and with how it affected me and how it affected my family, but then, on the other side of that, then being able to help other people who otherwise I would not have been had I not had the illness, it kind of puts it in perspective.
And as an added bonus to a roller coaster ride of emotions over the past two months, Steve, who decided to return to Cedarville University three years ago, just celebrated a major milestone.
God prompted me to go back and get my master's. And so, I just graduated, virtual graduation, this past weekend with my master's in ministry.
And while he doesn't plan on leaving Oakwood Public Safety anytime soon, he does plan on using his new degree every day.
My job a lot is about ministry. Ultimately, ministry is about people. And so, I have already been able to take what I've learned and apply that to my specific job now, that when you can more effectively love people, and when you can show them God's love, and when you can actually step up and put yourselves in their shoes, it makes me a much more competent police officer, firefighter, and EMT who can have compassion for other people.
For Spectrum News, I'm Tino Bovinzi.
What amazing story. You know, and the thing, and Tara's actually in the audience tonight. You know, when this video was taken, Tara was very ill. You know, you hear the stories about people dealing with COVID, trips to the hospital. What the Norris family endured for probably 60 to 70 days is not what you would wish upon anybody. But if there's any family that could get through it, it's Steve and Tara. Their call for their faith, their resilience for one another, their passion for helping their fellow man, it's immeasurable. And for Steve to do what he did, you heard his story. I remember when he came into my office, Steve was our full-time detective. And he said, at that time, he said, Captain, I have to tell you something. I was his immediate supervisor. I said, what's that? He said, I'm going to leave the detective section, and I'm going to go back to a crew. Steve spent a lot of years there, and he said he had a calling, and he needed the flexibility in his schedule to go back and finish his master's in ministry degree. And for anybody that knows him to know, it's not a question of him being faced with adversity like this and helping out somebody else. You know, I've said this before, there's no greater impact that you can have on somebody than saving their life. And who knows, Steve, how many lives and families you've impacted by your selfless act? And you know, law enforcement right now is getting beat up nationwide a little bit. Some of it we deserve, but much of it we don't. And when people question the integrity and the professionalism of the individuals that make up this profession, this is example A, of the type of men and women across this nation that are in this profession. So, with that being said, Steve, I want to present you with a plaque. It says, "Recognition Award Presented to Officer Steve Norris in recognition of your dedication and commitment to helping others during the initial outbreak of the COVID pandemic, September 21, 2020." Congratulations.
We, again, appreciate your efforts on that. I know of some personal folks that have received convalescent plasma, and it's made a significant, had a significant effect on their recovery time and survivability. So, thank you again for your efforts. I'd also like to thank Spectrum for giving us the opportunity to show that to our citizens. I know not a lot of people know about Channel One, but when I look at that news that Channel One puts together, it's better than any network channel that I normally watch, including Fox. So, you know, turn on Channel One and listen to the news someday. You might get something that's unbiased. Next, we have, I have a resolution, well, first of all, I have a resolution honoring Dr. S. Darrell App, II. But before we go into that, I'd like to introduce our Director of Leisure Services, Carol Collins. She has a few comments she would like to make. Welcome, Carol.
First of all, I'd like to thank everybody that came in honor of Darrell tonight. I would like to introduce his family. And I'll start at the back. Jerry is Darrell's son, Jerry App, and then his daughter Polly Page, and then Kelly Perizy. And then the next person is my niece, Amanda Klein, and my brother, Bill Collins. And then we'll go back to the next row, and that's Brendan App. That's Jerry and Lisa's son, and Darrell's grandson, and then Evan App, and then Jerry's wife, Lisa. But what can I say, you know, about S. Darrell App? You know, he was a wonderful person. He was an inspiration to everybody. He had a wonderful work ethic. He loved veterinary and medicine and helping his furry little friends. They loved him as well. He was compassionate about life, loved Ohio State, and he often reminded people that it was THE Ohio State University, not Ohio State. He played lacrosse at Ohio State and loved Ohio State football. He left a legacy for his family and his friends. He loved Oakwood, his community, including Smith Gardens. He was always willing to help others and lend a helping hand. He was a busy beaver. He was mischievous in many, many ways. I know that his spirit is with us tonight. He most certainly has a smile on his face, a twinkle in his eye, and more than likely, a tear or two running down his face. But we know that tonight, we are celebrating him and thinking of him. He loved Oriental Trading and Orvis. He was the love of my life. We spent almost 25 years together. I was very, very fortunate to have him in my life. On behalf of Darrell's family, friends, and myself, I thank you for such a wonderful tribute to him tonight in remembrance of Darrell. In his living honor and memory, these two benches have been purchased and will be at Smith Gardens in his honor. But I also would like to thank Oakwood City Council and City Manager Clops for making this happen tonight. He's a very, very remarkable man. He's missed very much, but he will live in the hearts of so many people. But again, I thank you on behalf of myself and also his family. I did forget his niece, Sandy, and his great niece, Jody, and also Wayne. So, who is his nephew? And also his son, Scott App. So, with that, thank you so very much.
Thank you. You know, with everyone wearing masks, it is hard to find everyone. But what we're going to do now is I'm going to publicly read the resolution on behalf of Dr. App. And while I'm doing that, we have created a video slideshow that you can watch. That way, you won't have to look at me. You can watch the slideshow. Again, to honor the life and contributions of Dr. S. Darrell App, II, Doctor of Veterinary Medicine, to the city of Oakwood. Whereas Dr. S. Darrell App passed away on Thursday, March 19, 2020, and council wishes to honor his life and community contributions with this resolution of sincere appreciation. And whereas Darrell App was born in Kalamazoo, Michigan in 1931, received his undergraduate degree from THE Ohio State University in 1955, and in 1957, he received a Doctor of Veterinary Medicine in Veterinary Medicine from OSU. And whereas Darrell App was a stalwart and lifelong fan and supporter of THE Ohio State University. Whereas as a student at Ohio State, Darrell App was one of the pioneers in the OSU men's lacrosse, for which he was publicly honored in the Ohio Stadium Horseshoe in 2008. Whereas Darrell App excelled in the rigorous sport of lacrosse, was captain of the OSU team, and led the team to several winning years. And whereas following veterinary school, Dr. App opened his own practice, App Veterinary Clinic, and for over 45 years, lovingly and compassionately cared for thousands of pets throughout Oakwood and the Dayton region. And whereas Dr. App treasured his city of Oakwood and was a dedicated member of the Oakwood community for several decades, providing volunteer public service in numerous capacities, including member of the Oakwood Board of Health from 1978 to 1985, member of the Oakwood Environmental Committee, now called the Oakwood Beautification Committee, from 1994 until his passing, many of those years as the committee chair. As committee member and chair, Dr. App was heavily involved with the annual Property Beautification Awards Program. He was the chair of the Friends of Smith Gardens Committee and a member of the 2004 City Comprehensive Planning Committee. Whereas Dr. App was particularly devoted to Smith Gardens and demonstrated this devotion through his diligent work as chair of the Garden Committee that was charged with public relations and fundraising for the greening of Smith Gardens. And whereas as a veterinarian, Dr. App assisted the Oakwood Public Safety Department on many occasions over the years when the department responded to calls regarding wounded or dangerous pets and wild animals, with much of this assistance being provided late at night and on weekends. And whereas Dr. App will be fondly remembered as a man known for his kindness and an ever-present sense of humor, and is a dedicated volunteer in the Oakwood community. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Oakwood, Montgomery County, Ohio, the Council of the City of Oakwood accords special public recognition to the life and service of Dr. S. Darrell App, II, and to the many contributions he made to the Oakwood community. It is passed by the Council of the City of Oakwood this 21st day of September, 2020. It is signed by all five members of council and our city manager. And we have copies, original copies for each of his children, as well as you, Karen. So, or Carol, I'm sorry. And I would now like to ask our former mayor, Judy Cook, who has some comments she would like to make regarding Dr. App. Welcome, Judy.
Thank you. I'm delighted to have this opportunity. You know, if I was asked how to describe the ideal Oakwood citizen, my thoughts turn immediately to Darrell App. He was a man who treasured Oakwood and responded by participating and giving back. He began serving Oakwood as a member of the Oakwood Board of Health in 1978. It was an application he continued the rest of his life. At the time of his death, he was still a member of the Oakwood Beautification Committee. Darrell not only served, but he served well. I remember his time on the important Comprehensive Planning Commission. He attended meetings and came prepared. It is a pattern he repeated throughout all his years and variety of service. One of Darrell's special commitments was his role as chairman of the Friends of Smith Gardens. This was a lengthy and challenging assignment. The committee was a delightful, successful group of people who campaigned for enhancement of our community treasure, Smith Gardens. Under Darrell's leadership, funds were raised to finance the master plan improvements, including the lovely garden house that we enjoy today. These were happy times. So like Darrell, he always made sure that we had fun together while we worked. Of course, some people knew Darrell as their pet's doctor. Along with being a very respected veterinarian, he was immensely popular. Everyone knew that all medical treatments were given with a dose of love. You know, it was well-known that Darrell spoke to the animals. I always suspected that they talked back, and Darrell knew exactly what they were saying. During the last few years of his life, Darrell struggled with physical limits. He never allowed them to diminish his spirit. With the help and support of his ever-present wife... With the help and support of his ever-present wife, Carol Collins, Daryl lived each day to its fullest and looked forward to the next. I share a church membership with Daryl. Every Sunday, if at all possible, Daryl was there participating in the life of the church. He was loved and admired by his church family. Daryl was a source of inspiration to all of us. Daryl, by his example, taught many of us how to be a good citizen. He is no longer with us, but the legacy he leaves creates a present that we will not forget. We are forever grateful for his contributions. Thank you.
And Carol, do you have any concluding comments?
The only comment that I can say is, thank you all for coming tonight. I really, really appreciate the support that I've been given through the city as well as many friends and family. I couldn't have done it without all of the support that I have gotten. I have always loved my job, and Daryl loved the community, and that's probably what brought us together. We shared an awful lot together, and I do miss him an awful lot, but his legacy will live on. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to ask Lori if you could give these resolutions to Carol to pass out to We have a couple other former employees here. Our former city manager, Mike Kelly, is over here. And in the very back, our former assistant city manager, Jay Weiss-Kircher, is here. And I believe Vicky Gerhardt is here. I thought I saw her in the back. And we are now ready to go to the regular visitors section. So if Mike Kelly wished to come down and tell us what we're doing wrong, we'd be happy to have you come and address council. But we are going to go to some very exciting legislation. If you wish to stay for that, you are more than welcome. But if you wish to leave, we'll rest here for a minute or two while you can, you'll again, put your mask on and leave. We will proceed with, we'll wait a second for folks that do want to leave. Again, thank you all for, what am I doing wrong here? Thank you all for coming. We will now proceed to, oh, well, I'm assuming no one else wishes to address council, so with that, we will conclude the visitor portion. And we will immediately go to legislation, and Vice Mayor Byington has a resolution.
Yes, Your Honor, this is a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. Each tax year, the Montgomery County Budget Commission is required to certify its determination of the millage rates and amounts the city will receive from its existing property tax levies. For 2020 and 2021, the Budget Commission has determined that Oakwood will receive $1,131,795 from inside millage and $1,523,751 from outside millage tax levies. These figures are consistent with the city's projection. This is an annual resolution to accept the county's determination, and I move the council to adopt this resolution this evening.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion for Vice Mayor Byington? Hearing none. Lori, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Hilton?
Yes.
Mr. Epley?
Yes.
Thank you. Our next piece of legislation, Councilmember Stevens has an ordinance he'd like to introduce.
Thank you, Mayor. An ordinance amending Section 521.12, placing snow on public streets or debris on paved streets of the Oakwood General Offenses Code to expand the prohibition thereof to apply to sidewalks and other public rights of way. This is an ordinance to update an existing provision of our General Offenses Code. It has always been unlawful to place snow, grass clippings, or other debris in our public rights of way. However, the city has experienced issues with contractors doing line clearance work for utility companies who trim street trees, sometimes leaving limbs and branches in large piles along the tree lawns and sidewalks. In some instances, these piles have blocked pedestrian traffic along the sidewalks. The updated ordinance I am introducing tonight makes it clear that debris includes limbs and tree trimmings and expands the prohibition to include both paved rights of way, such as sidewalks in streets, and unpaved rights of way, such as tree lawns. The ordinance retains an exception for homeowners who put ordinary yard debris out for refuse collection. This is the first reading of this ordinance, so I make no motion at this time.
Thank you. Councilmember Stevens, I believe you have another ordinance you'd like to introduce as well.
An ordinance to enact new Chapter 907, Visibility Hazards of the Oakwood Streets and Public Services Code. Oakwood is a predominantly residential community, and public safety is always a paramount concern. The city prides itself on the safety of its streets for drivers, cyclists, joggers, dog walkers, and stroller pushers. As a local government with jurisdiction over public streets, the city has certain responsibilities to keep them free of obstructions and hazards. This includes things that block critical visibility. Our Public Works and Leisure Services Departments routinely trim trees, bushes, and other vegetation near roadways to ensure that critical sightlines are kept open. Occasionally, we run into a situation where sightlines are blocked by trees or vegetation growing on private property adjacent to the street and outside the public right-of-way. In some cases, we have been able to trim as needed with the property owner's consent, but on rare occasions, the property owner will not consent. This normally results in enforcement action under the city's Property Maintenance Code, which can involve a lengthy court process before the safety hazard is finally addressed. The ordinance I am introducing tonight will create a streamlined mechanism to deal with these situations more quickly and effectively. It will allow the city to provide written notice to the property owner when trimming needs to be done, which will be based on objective traffic engineering standards established by the Ohio Department of Transportation. The property owner can then choose whether to do the work himself or herself, or allow the city to perform the work. It also provides an appeal process in the event of a disagreement as to whether the work is necessary. The goal of this ordinance is to establish a clear procedure that protects private property rights and affords due process to the residents, while acknowledging the reality that safety concerns need to be addressed quickly. This is also a first reading of this ordinance, so I make no motion at this time.
Thank you very much. We will deal with that at our next regular council meeting. Now, Vice Mayor Byington also has another ordinance he'd like to introduce.
Yes, Your Honor, this is an ordinance to amend Section 1 of the 2020 Original Appropriation Ordinance Number 4897 and Supplemental Appropriation Ordinance Number 4912 and 4917 to provide for the appropriation of, one, an additional amount of $64,337.87 to be expended from the Local Coronavirus Relief Fund to cover costs consistent with the requirement of Section 5001 of the CARES Act for the City of Oakwood, State of Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31, 2020. This is a supplemental appropriation ordinance to address coronavirus reimbursement funding the city is eligible to receive under the federal CARES Act. Council adopted a similar ordinance in July when we learned that the City of Oakwood was eligible to receive up to $128,661.73 in CARES Act funding. Our eligibility has now been increased by $64,337.87 for a total of $192,992.60 in CARES Act funding. Council is required to adopt a supplemental appropriation ordinance in order to use that money. Under Section 3.04 of the City Charter, this appropriation ordinance will take effect immediately. I move the council waive the second reading of this ordinance and adopt it this evening.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. By waiving the second reading, I believe we need a four-fifths vote to approve. And we can only spend this money on certain things as in the law, so that's why we're keeping it in a separate fund, and we'll only use that money for specifically allocated COVID-related expenses. Any other questions for Vice Mayor Byington? Hearing none. Lori, would you call the roll?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Hilton?
Yes.
Mr. Epley?
Yes.
And then Vice Mayor Byington has a final ordinance.
Yes, and this goes to what you were just talking about here a moment ago. This is an ordinance authorizing the Finance Director to make amended entries within the financial records of the city to reflect the recent establishment of the Local Coronavirus Relief Fund and declare an emergency. The CARES Act, which was adopted in March, made federal coronavirus relief funding available to the states. Subsequently, in June, Ohio adopted legislation to establish a procedure for making those CARES Act funds available to municipalities. The Ohio procedure requires each municipality to establish a fund known as the Local Coronavirus Relief Fund and to run all qualified reimbursable expenses through that fund. Council adopted legislation to establish that fund in July. However, reimbursement funding is available for qualified expenses made between March 1, 2020 and December 30, 2020, which means some of our qualified expenses were made via other city accounting funding funds prior to the establishment of our Local Coronavirus Relief Fund. In order to seek reimbursement, all of the city's qualified coronavirus expenditures need to be consolidated within the Local Coronavirus Relief Fund. Council believes it is fiscally prudent to ensure that Oakwood qualifies for the maximum reimbursement for which we are eligible. The ordinance I am introducing will authorize the Finance Director to make the necessary adjustments to the city's financial records. This ordinance is being introduced as an emergency measure so that it will take effect immediately, ensuring that the adjustments are made in a timely fashion to allow the city to pursue its full CARES Act reimbursement. I move the council to adopt this ordinance as an emergency measure for the reasons stated above in the ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other questions for Vice Mayor Byington? Hearing none. Lori, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Hilton?
Yes.
Mr. Epley?
Yes.
Thank you. That concludes our legislation for this evening. Do we have a city manager's report?
I do, Your Honor. I'll try to be brief here. First, I want to thank the community for all the extra effort as we continue to work through this COVID-19 virus. And I'm happy to report again tonight that everything is working smoothly. The visitors that come to the city building here to the OCC and occasionally to the Public Works Center are respecting the virus and the protocols we have in place. So we very much appreciate that. And I want to thank our staff again for working every day throughout this entire pandemic. The nature of the work that we do demands that. And for each department, public safety, public works, admin, et cetera, you know, we've had to work through this, and I thank each and every one of our employees for that. There's a lot of talk now, as we're approaching Halloween, as to, you know, what that's going to look like. And the Oakwood City Newsletter, which will come out in about two weeks, will have an article in it stating that in early October, we'll make a decision on, you know, safety protocols and exactly how we'll handle Halloween, and in particular, the trick-or-treating activity here in Oakwood. But as you know, we are in good company in terms of having to make decisions like that, and we'll be, you know, working with all of our fellow local government officials to hopefully come up with a unified approach to how we handle that. I want to add my thanks to Cindy Stafford and the Finance Department for the successful audit again. If you look down in our city charter, which is, of course, our governing document here, just about half of the specific items for which I'm responsible as city manager, half of those have to do with public funds and finances. And having someone like Cindy and her wonderful staff managing that is enormously important to me. I want to thank Chief Hill for his nice events tonight and all that he does in continuing to expertly lead our public safety department through a very difficult time, needless to say. And also want to thank Carol Collins. We opened our pool this summer. We operated it through Labor Day weekend, and a lot of communities in throughout Ohio did not do that, and throughout our nation. And we did it successfully, and hats off to Carol and to Karen Early in particular, Carol's program supervisor here, who has responsibility for the pool, for all their extra work in, you know, operating the pool and allowing us to offer that important summer activity. And I'll end my comments tonight with a couple quick stories about Daryl App. And like many, many, many people in the region here, I too took my pet to Daryl, and it's a sad memory, but my first dog, her name was Carmel. She was a beagle mix, and she was probably, well, she's that pet that predated my two children, so she always holds a special place in my heart because I had her before Brandon and Brooke. But, you know, Carmel had kidney failure back, I want to say, right around 2000, and we had to put her down. And that is a horrific thing to do as anyone that owns a pet. And Daryl was, the word compassionate was used tonight in the resolution, but I witnessed that to the nth degree. And just a wonderful man who definitely found the right profession for himself. And the second one is a very happy memory I have. And if you noticed in one of the pictures there on the slideshow, it was Daryl and I at an OSU football game. And I'd never been to a game, and out of nowhere, in the fall of 2006, my phone rings. I pick it up, it's Daryl. He's like, "Hey, Norrie, want to go to a Buckeye game?" And I'm like, "Sure." You know, I've never done that before. And a couple weekends later, we went. It was a beautiful Saturday. I don't remember who we played, but I'm sure the Buckeyes won. And anyway, I have a wonderful memory of that day with Daryl App. So those are my comments for tonight.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for our city manager? All right, then it's now time for council comments. Councilmember Epley?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have no comments this evening.
Thank you. Councilmember Hilton?
No comments, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilmember Stevens?
Yeah, I have a few. First thing is, on Sunday, August 30, I was fortunate to be a greeter in the car director at the Oakwoods Ice Cream Social. And what that allowed me to do was see everybody. Every single person that went through there, I got to say hello to and point them right or left to get in the lanes that were provided by the OCC staff. The OCC staff did a phenomenal job setting it all up. I think we gave out 850 cups, give or take a few. That's a lot of ice cream. And I'll tell you what was really nice about it. It was great to see all the diversity of everybody who came up in the cars. There were, there were single people, you know, two people. There were carloads of a family of six, a family of eight. There were, I wish I could see more smiling faces. I know a lot were smiling, but unfortunately, wearing the masks, it was hard to see the smiles. But tried to say hello to all the children, and it was a really nice event. It was great to see all the young families. And there was even a few empty nesters who made a point to tell me it was their date night because they didn't have their kids, and that was really nice. Number two, I'll piggyback on what Norb said. One of my favorite memories as a child was going to, I've known Daryl App for, I guess, 50 years because my first dog was an 85-pound Weimaraner that died at the age of 14, I think when I was, I don't know, 16 maybe, I don't know. So, but I love going to the vet, and I always went with my parents to go see Dr. App. And of course, later in life, he became Daryl and a closer friend, but he was always Dr. App to me, and it was always fun. And it is accurate that every time you, I felt like he talked to me just as much as he messed with the dog, you know? We're there for the dog. So a great, I'm just honored to be here because it brought back a lot of memories for me. And finally, I just want to, once again, I try to do this as much as I can because I don't think it could be done enough, I want to thank our local safety department again and let them know that I want to thank our local safety department again and let them know that as a council, I know I do personally because I tell them every time I see them, but as a council, we not only support you, but we stand by you. And we really appreciate all your hard work. And Chief, if you could pass that on to as many of your officers as you can, I greatly appreciate it. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Byington?
Yeah, it sounds like Mr. Stevens took most of my stuff, but...
I do that a lot, don't I? We should probably talk before the meeting.
I also want to commend Cindy Stafford on the audit. When I was reading through the information, am I correct in saying that City of Oakwood was the only city that received that? It seemed like all the other ones were school districts or...
Yeah, we were the only one in that month that, when they finished the audit, because I thought the same thing. And I wanted to be able to say that we're better than every other city in town, but a couple others have since received that award. We won't, we won't tell people who that was.
Anyway, the list was extremely long, even for that month, but they all seemed to be smaller jurisdictions or school districts, so I was really impressed with that. And throughout the, all the different presentations, whether it was that award, whether it was the police awards, or Darrell's presentation as well, I was just constantly reminded about how incredibly special our community is. We say that all the time, you know, that Oakwood is, you know, the place to raise a family and work, live, and play and that kind of thing. But when you actually put faces to names and you experience the love and outpouring that not only we have for somebody like Darrell, but that the officers took to do some research on a person that, you know, from the 30s, that, you know, that is just not a daily occurrence, but they took the time, they made the effort, and that just shows the specialness that we have in this community. Makes me very proud of it.
Yes. And for the record, Lieutenant Baggett just happens to be an Oakwood High School graduate and grew up in Oakwood. Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
I know Carol Collins had to leave with her family, but we received two notes from citizens and I thought I'd like to read those notes because it goes to, you know, we've talked about public safety and we didn't talk much about Public Works this time, but, you know, they've worked through this entire pandemic, you know, without missing a beat. But we got a, we got a note, says, "I want to commend the Oakwood Community Center on providing a safe and fun environment for our family this past summer. My children participated in the kiddie camps, Camp Schaefer's, tennis lessons, and beginning golf as a family, and we all enjoyed going to the pool all summer long. With so many camps and events canceled, we were very grateful that the OCC had many offerings that appealed to our children and they had an absolute blast. A huge thank you to the OCC staff for not canceling summer and working hard to keep our kids safe and active this summer." And then another letter is, "As this most unusual summer draws to a close, I want to thank you and the City of Oakwood for supporting our favorite summer activity, swimming at our beloved Gardner Memorial Swimming Pool. In the spring, as COVID-19 increased and fear with it, we watched communities cancel their community pool seasons. Instead, Oakwood Community Center developed an approach that allowed the pool to open. We were so thankful. The swim lesson, the swim season had been a great success for swimmers of all ages. We have observed the kids enjoy a normal, good time with little risk to their health. Lap swimmers have enjoyed their time for regular swimming as well. The program with fixed time periods and limited numbers of swimmers in each period allowed many, but not too many, members to swim safely. The online reservation system managed by Karen Early with the excellent OCC staff was easy to use. Once we learned how to navigate the system, we could find available swim times on most days. We have thanked the OCC staff numerous times for their work to allow a lovely summer at the pool. It seemed that we should thank you and the city for your support for a program that was truly a highlight of the season for so many Oakwood residents." One of the things mayors get to do is issue proclamations. And on September 15, it was my honor to go over to Brookdale, Oakwood to issue a proclamation declaring September 15 as Richard Back Day as he celebrated his 100th birthday. He came here and worked at, I believe it was NCR for his life after getting out of the military and lived at his home for about, since, he built, he built the home, I think, in 1950 and lived there with his three children who graduated from Oakwood schools until 2015, I think, when he had to move to Brookdale. And so his, his family was there. They brought him out into the patio in front of Brookdale and the kids got to sing happy birthday to him. I did not read the resolution to him. I just, I just said, "Today is, here's a resolution for you and it's Richard Back Day in Oakwood and I'm honored to be here to present it to him." So that was, that was a fun event. And then I filled out my absentee ballot registration and put it in the mail today. I received that, you know, from the Secretary of State a week or so ago and I said, "I'm going to fill it out and see how long it takes for me to get my ballot back and I'll have an updated report for you on our next meeting, which is October 5." We'll find out if I get my ballots. My understanding, you can track that process online and I'm looking forward to trying that process. I voted early in March, so I didn't have to, I just went over to the county, walked right in and was in and out of there in about five minutes. And there wasn't a whole lot on the ballot in March, but there's going to be more this year, including a Second District Court of Appeals position that I already know who I'm voting for on that one. So I look forward to following, following up with how Montgomery County is handling the ballot process this year. And in knowing what I know, it will be done very thoroughly and professionally and fairly. So with that, our next meeting is going to be on Monday, October 5, 2020, and we are adjourned.